Allegiance.
Wish allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight. Will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. And first up tonight, we do have a special presentation. It's our Fall VIP Award Presentation. Mr. Kuntz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So, we just got finished with the Fall Halloween VIP season. We did have a lot of properties nominated this session. We had over a dozen properties nominated. As always, the properties that are nominated, we put towards, we show everyone on the administrative staff level, and they are the ones that do the voting. I don't do any of the voting, just for the record, unless there's a tiebreaker, which I've never had to do. So, Ms. Burks, if you would come up, please. I'm very happy to announce that the winner of the 2021 Fall Halloween VIP is Ms. Sherlette Burks. The mayor's going to come down and present to you, and she lives at 7111 Dominican.
Well, behalf of the city and our council and our staff, congratulations on your fall work. We appreciate you. We appreciate you taking care of your house and showing it off. So, we're going to get a picture of you. My pleasure. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jack, you might also mention that the lady rode in the car with her has one of those signs in her front yard from last, two signs, two signs, two signs. And every time I see her walking in the neighborhood, she wants to know if she's going to win the next one. That's why I'm glad you said it's your problem, not ours. That's...
Well, we appreciate you both. Thank you. All right. Well, we appreciate you. You can stay if you want.
Now, I told them when they walked in, they'd walk five miles a day and drove from the corner of Savina and Old Salem up to the city building now.
Well, thanks again.
Have a good evening, ladies.
Okay, and we'll have the clerk's report, please.
First, before you have it, you have the council workshop minutes.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous.
And you also have before you the council meeting minutes of November 18th, 2021.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to accept as written, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous also. Looks like we have no old business tonight. We do have, on the original docket, we had, looks like, two orders of new business. The first one, we are, I'm going to ask that we table, table that. So, should Barb read, read the ordinance number?
Yeah, let's read the ordinance, and then there can be a motion, a second, and a vote to table it.
I move.
That's due to some other information that we have, so we're going to table that until what, next week, next meeting?
It's ordinance O-122122, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute legal documentation necessary to purchase real property located at 8051 North Main Street, Clayton, Ohio, and bearing parcel ID number M60163120001 for the purchase amount of $136,000 plus closing cost and declaring an emergency.
I'll move to table that.
Second.
Okay, motion to table the first ordinance by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's tabled until the next meeting. So, thank you. And will you read the next ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-122123, an ordinance authorizing amendments to designation of job categories and pay schedules and declaring an emergency.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you the proposed 2022 wage scale. And included in these wage scales is a 2% cost of living increase for non-union employees. Also, we actually added five new positions to the job categories: full-time police lieutenant, full-time event manager, full-time fire safety inspector, part-time bartender, and part-time property room manager. The fire safety inspector wages will be shared, actually equally, among all three entities of the fire collaborative. So, what you see there, just, that's just a note for you that the city won't bear all those costs. Also, you'll see a difference, you'll see an increase in the fire battalion chief. It was raised above the 2% because of the additional responsibilities the battalion chiefs took on with the collaborative. Also, some adjustment was made with the part-time seasonal Meadowbrook positions as far as the name of them, so we can spread those or use the same position for both the pro shop and the banquet operations. As well as the seasonal positions were adjusted to a starting rate of 1075 to help with recruitment, because we are seeing that with all the available jobs out there, that we did need to raise that for 2022.
So, the event manager, we were told it would be 50 with benefits, that it would not be 50,000. The salary wouldn't be 50, it would be 50 with benefits.
Correct.
But this is 50,000 plus benefits.
Correct. Okay, my apologies, then. With that, it was the starting rate of 50 that I misspoke when I presented the information, because it's a starting wage of 50 plus the benefits.
And that's what was presented in the budget at the last meeting.
Office workers two or office assistant two going to work for nothing?
It actually, you have to turn to the next page. It got cut off. No, they will not. I see what you're saying. So...
It's nice of you to donate your time.
So, with the office assistant two, you'll see that on there, and both of the office assistants are at the two positions, so there is no office assistant one. That's why we got rid of that category.
And it looks like firefighter EMS got more than a 2% raise also.
So, with that, we actually, instead of, to make it easier as far as the administrative portion of it for Brian and myself, no, it's actually for Brian and myself, that because of the fire EMS, there are, there were three different levels. There was the EMT, the paramedic, and then the career. But we just went ahead and made that into one title with the total range. So, an EMT would still get less than a paramedic. It's just, it would be within that range.
Move to declare an emergency.
Second.
Was there any other questions? Kenny, did you have any other?
No, I mean, I guess, we were told it would be 50 with benefits, and now it's going to be 50 plus benefits. I mean, it is what it is.
Well, it wasn't the, yeah, like Amanda said, it wasn't the budget that way, and I apologize if I missed it.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
This is the, like, the folks we have at Meadowbrook, the attendants, and do we have people applying for those jobs at that wage? Because it just doesn't seem very high to me.
So, it, it takes a special kind. We do get, we are thankful, we do have quite a few retirees who come and work for us. I mean, I think that they enjoy the atmosphere, they enjoy golfing, they enjoy Meadowbrook, and that's one of the reasons why that they work there. We also get the high school or college age where, that they are, you know, know that it's only for a couple of summers. And again, I believe we probably wouldn't get, we do probably lose out on some, but I do believe that this is able to get us what we need.
Don't they get free golfing privileges also?
There is, based on hours worked and things like that. Yeah, the, yes, we have been able to fill them in the past.
Marion's Pizza just increased, and they're making pizzas for $14 an hour starting pay.
Sure. And, and again, we're, we're trying to be fiscally responsible, you know, and again, we have been able to recruit with that. And then I also think the, we do with being able to work around school and things like that, that there isn't necessarily, you have to work this schedule or have to work this week. We do, we are able to recruit. But who knows if next year I may be coming to you, and, you know, it may be a different story.
Well, I think you gave me the right answer. What I was looking for is that, you know, as long as they're filled and, you know, I get it, people like to golf, and they like to hang around the golf course and all that, so, okay. So, Mr. Gorman has made a motion to declare an emergency, and Ms. Kelly seconded. Is there, is there any other discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimously an emergency. And is anyone?
I'll move, we pass the motion also.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we have three resolutions tonight. Will you read the first, please?
Resolution R-122160, an emergency resolution to accept the material terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio memorandum of understanding and consistent with the terms of the July 21st, 2021 National Opioid Settlement Agreement.
So, if you remember back in August, council authorized the city manager to participate in a settlement that had been negotiated with the three major opioid distributors. Johnson &amp; Johnson was not included in that. They have now reached a settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson. What this legislation does is allows the city manager to sign the documentation to participate in the J&amp;J settlement.
Do we really have a choice?
You could say no. You could say no and not take the money.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Henning to approve, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let that record show that's unanimous. Will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R-122161, a resolution to authorize and approve the 2022 budget and permanent appropriations.
Evening.
Kevin?
Last meeting, we had the workshop on the budget. The only thing that has changed with that budget is, like Elaine said, was the inclusion for the fire inspector position. That's $75,000. That's including benefits. It's going to be shared with Union and Inglewood. They were, Brian was telling me that they were looking at hiring out contract inspectors just for specific jobs they knew of coming up, and it would be around $125,000 just for that. So, they'll have some eye on full-time to pick up the ones that they don't know about and still be costless and be shared by the three cities.
So, how was the, when you share, I get it, sharing the salary would be pretty easy, but how do you share the other benefits?
He came over, we calculated the salary, added on insurance, Medicare matching, the police and, she police and fire, police and fire, the employer side, dental, we did all the, all the additional to get a total cost, and then that's why we didn't be able to divide it by three, and they'll, each city will reimburse us a third.
Okay, so, we're going to be administering it?
Yeah, she'll be, she'll be our employee.
Okay. Any questions?
About that?
Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. And will you read the final resolution, please?
Resolution R-122162, a resolution approving special counsel in connection with legal services relative to liquor permit matters from Meadowbrook at Clayton.
So, we talked about previously hiring an attorney with experience, because that's really what you need, is somebody who can get this paperwork through the liquor control commission. So, that's what this legislation does, authorize the city manager to engage legal counsel for that purpose.
Does John do a lot of that kind of work?
Yeah, John's done, and I've talked to him about it with respect to Meadowbrook, so I think we're in good shape.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous also. Thank you. And we'll go to the city managers' report. Amanda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple items for you this evening. First, just a reminder that Breakfast with Santa is Saturday, December 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Excuse me, the Hunter's Path Final Development Plan will be before city council for consideration, or the planning commission's recommendation to council will be before council on December 16th, so that's our next meeting. It'll be a public hearing. Just a reminder that at the first meeting in January, since we just had an election, we need to, our council will need to vote on a vice mayor and president pro tempore. Unfortunately, I have to tell you that our Union and State Route 49 safety project has been pushed back to May 2022 because they cannot get materials for the project. Our, yeah, our Westbrook and 49 project is actually out to bid right now, so they'll probably be going on at the same time. I'll keep council updated on that if anything changes, if we're able to get work done or if things get pushed back again. Back in September, Law Director Dillon sent to council, updated the council rules or some changes that, you know, she and I had discussed. So, I don't know if council would like to set a work session to discuss that, or if you want more time to read over them, and then maybe at the next meeting, we decide if you want a work session. But I think that, you know, we haven't updated the council rules since 2003, so maybe that might be something that we want to do going into next year.
I would recommend we set the, set a workshop if that's what we need.
I don't mind a workshop, but from reading it, there, there's a lot of him's and he's being changed to she and her, and there's not a lot of major changes. I know that Martina has replaced Buzz at this point in time. And the one change that I did see is in your comment here about the vice mayor, every two years, in the rules of council, it says every year. And that's not crossed out or in bold letters either. That was part of the original one. Your, your letter or your quote is a tile, a tile lock, anyway. It's, yeah. And that means it's a quote from somewhere, I think, and I don't know if that's from the...
It's from the charter.
From the rules of, of council or where you got it at, but I don't know which is right and which is wrong. And Amanda, that's all I'm saying. But like I said, the rest of it, there doesn't seem to be any major, major changes. I don't know, Martina, is there?
I don't think there's any major changes. I think what we wanted to do is just bring it before you to see if you wanted to have a workshop and see if there were any. Those were just things that we discussed. We didn't know if there were additional items that you would like to discuss for possible revisions.
I'm, I'm not opposed to a workshop. Don't misunderstand me. That's...
And, you know, I, I'm not sure how to bring this up, whether this would be part of that or not. When we're looking at compensation issues for the mayor and for council, I looked at the charter to see if there was anything in there. It doesn't really give us much guidance on that, does it?
Have to look and see. I don't think it really does. I know, basically, we can't do it midterm, but we can look at that, and we can include that as part of the discussion of the workshop. That'd be perfectly fine to discuss.
Yeah, and, and the reason I'm asking, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm happy with 4,800 a year, because I don't do this for money, nor does anybody else on this, except maybe the mayor, because that 7,200 is, you know, a lot of money. But people in the future, if we're going to attract candidate, people that want to serve here, we may need to think about developing a commission or something to take a look at it so that we can be competitive in the future to attract better candidates.
This is the first job I've ever had for 23 years, and I never got a raise, though, Dennis.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Tim, and, and I know we're earning our money, but, you know, maybe, maybe we ought to just look at, so maybe we should have a workshop, figure out how to do that in the best way possible. That's just my suggestion. Otherwise, the rules that you changed are, I agree with Tim, they're, they're not much.
Any other input on that?
Yes, we'll do it after the first of the year. Yeah, we'll come, no, not the week before Christmas.
Okay, so, so we'll, next meeting, we'll pick a date.
Yeah, say, I'll look at the calendar, make sure there's nothing else coming up that we need to schedule a workshop for before this, and we'll go from there. And then lastly, just a reminder that there are numerous boards and commission appointments that will be expiring, so we need to start thinking about replacing those people or reinstating people. And that's all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions.
Will the swearing-in be the first meeting in January also?
Yes.
Anything else? Anything else for Amanda?
Yes, yes.
Jack, that's seven in the morning?
No, you don't have...
Are they, they're still picking up leaves, right?
They are, yes. They're making one more go around the city. I think they're starting on the east side of the city, on the other side of the river, and working their way across. Is that Crickben? Yeah.
Yeah, because I was driving up Thelma, and there's people pushing leaves into the middle of the street, making it almost impossible for two cars to pass each other. And I almost picked off one of the guys blowing his leaves in the street. Not on purpose.
Anything else for Amanda? Okay, let's see. So, we'll move to the visitors' comments. We just have one visitor tonight. Any comments, Mr. Earl?
Rooms, center, center's unique. What's that?
We can always use more volunteers, but I, I think, I think we have every, you know, if everyone shows up, that always shows up, I think we should be okay. But if someone would like to volunteer, you know, we'll, we'll find something for them to do. Yep.
Anything else, sir? Okay, council comments. We'll start with Mr. Lieberman.
Just wanted to wish everybody happy Hanukkah. It's that time of the year, and that's really all I have right now.
This is day five, Dennis?
It is. That's very good, Tim.
I have a message for Mr. Bachman. I had a client come in that was a teacher of yours, and he wanted to make sure that I passed along the congratulations. It was your history teacher, eighth grade, Mr. Kincaid. And he said, can you please make an announcement? That he was super proud of you. And he said, since you were in eighth grade, you were always interested in politics, and he thought it was amazing that you're getting involved from your eighth grade teacher.
Anything else? As you're drinking your coffee. Sorry.
I'm so sorry. No, my throat was hurting, so, no.
Greg?
Nothing related than wishing everybody happy holidays for whichever religious ceremony you celebrate this time of the year.
Mr. Gorman?
Yeah, I agree with Greg. I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, and a safe holiday season as well.
Kenny?
Happy Hanukkah to our friends that are celebrating that this week. And I know Northmont Fish has posted needs for canned goods, et cetera. Salem Church of God is doing a toys drive for the community for individuals who are in need this holiday season. So, if, if anybody is inclined to donate something to Salem Church of God, they are collecting toys for families with youth that are looking for assistance this holiday season, ages one to 15-plus. I was dropping off stuff yesterday, and the lady was telling me how a lot of teenagers have a difficult time being sponsored during the holiday season, because individuals think that they only need video games or want video games. And the lady was saying how these teenagers, you know, had asked for socks and basic things that we take for granted. So, I made, Natalie and I made a nice donation, and we will continue to support that and now do another one, because there are teenagers that are not sponsored. So, if you are inclined to do that, I know Salem Church of God and Northmont Fish and other local agencies are still looking for assistance to help sponsor kids in our community this holiday season.
Thank you. Brendan?
Evening, everyone. Guess really all I have is just to echo everyone with, you know, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah to those who are celebrating it right now. That's really all I have.
And I have a similar message. Happy Hanukkah to everyone who celebrates. We will have another council meeting before actual Christmas, so I'm sure we'll all say happy holiday time, but the holidays all start so early now, so we'll say happy holidays and just stay safe out there. Let's see, we do have a need for an executive session tonight, and it is for the, concerning the sale of property. So, can we have a motion for that?
I'll move for, for executive session.
I'll move for a short executive session, because I got to drive to Columbus yet tonight.
Second. So, motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman? Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. So, if all of our staff and visitors could vacate for a short time, we'll reconvene in just a few minutes. Okay, Jack? Okay, Jack? Okay, is there a motion to end the executive session?
Go move.
Second.
Motion to end the executive session by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're back in session now, is there a motion?
I move for adjournment.